The best season of Housework.
Mm-hmm. It was nice. How were you?
Very good.
It was, it was relatively low-key, you know, but that's...
It's bright.
That's, that's a big one.
Greetings.
Fancy meeting you in the status quo.
Bill, how are you?
My name is Plaxus.
Mr. Jackson, happy to hear you. Very good to hear you too. We need to...
They were just waiting for Don to come back before they all came over.
Yeah, we can... We can sit on five attorneys in here.
Don, Jim, type criminal.
On top of... We're gonna probably have... Commissioner Stamper.
Yes, please.
She might have some ideas. No, they might.
Who knows?
Jury.
Jury.
Yeah.
Being suggested we move to the other room. You don't have a huge impact.
Oh, okay. I'm good with that. Let's move to the other room.
Okey dokey.
Good crowd, even better.
Oops, sorry. We're moving.
Yep, we're coming out.
I was just gonna say, we're okay.
We're throwing chairs.
Do you want them together?
I think that we could have them separated.
Oh, are you hoping for...
Huh? We do.
You know we gotta break out the line.
With Liberty Champion.
I learned in the pouring down rain, the laser doesn't...
I'll get some more going.
I'm pretty much all squared away.
Yep.
I think, how are you guys doing?
Good, good.
How are you?
Thank you.
They didn't take care of them?
Yes.
Now they have them all.
They have them all here?
Yes. Except for Alicia, her little...
Yes.
But if they have them, it's better.
And in fact, there's anybody that's hearing them, I guess. Okay, we ready? Move on. Get the gym down. We ready? What I'm doing. Oh. So, right? One way along. And then we're ready to go.
Are we making three better?
Yeah.
I got a problem with that.
Yeah. Sure, we get up there. Yeah. Yeah, sure. I'm always looking for somebody to go off of it because he should go along. Yeah. Yeah. Because if you need to change chairs. So we really have to crack so... We can just put it back. Ready? Oh, okay. For Commissioner Farm.
Okay, we're, uh, we're ready to go now, Chuck.
Okay. So on, on my agenda, or my portion of the agenda, where it says Washington State FM La, that's actually being covered by Kevin. So we don't have to worry about that. I'm sorry. Everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll back up. Under the portion of my agenda where it says Washington State FM La, that's actually gonna be covered by Kevin's agenda as well. Do you wanna start with the boards? Questions first? We can cover those. Destination Pat Quinn?
Destination.
Okay, so Destination Pat Quinn, we do have a defendant that has been charged, Mr. Basetti from the prosecutor's offices here as well. So if you have any specific questions for him, they'll be more than happy to answer. But right now, what we had charged is one count of theft in the first degree, one count of theft in the second degree, and two counts of four degree. So it's kind of at beginning stages of the case. That's really the only update I have. If you have more questions, we certainly happy to answer them.
So what's the next step?
So she's been arraigned. So the next step would be an omnibus hearing. And omnibus hearing is just, it's basically a scheduling hearing. If there are special set hearings, I think it can be set, the date for those is chosen at the omnibus hearing. The defense is required to disclose what their defense is going to be. So for instance, if they're gonna say they didn't do it, that would be a general denial. They're gonna say duress, or you know, something along those lines. So we'll find out there. We'll also set a mutual discovery deadline. Typically, that's gonna be whatever between 10 and 14 days before the start of trial. And then we're also gonna give an estimation as to how long can they expect the trial to last. And then after that, you'll have a trial confirmation. That's a Thursday before the trial week. That's just to make sure that everybody's kinda ready to go. Then we'll have trial. Now, having said that, those hearings may get moved, reset. You can have multiple of one type of hearing. That is up to not necessarily the parties. Typically, it's gonna be a defense request to reset the hearing. And we usually don't stand in the way of those because if we do, A, it'll get denied, or B, they'll say that the defense attorney didn't have an adequate opportunity to prepare.
So has, uh, has any, is she scheduled to come before the courts now?
Yes, she's already been before the court once. Actually, she's been before the court twice. Once for preliminary appearance and once for arraignment. I think she's had arraignment. I'm not... Okay. So we're... Yeah. Off the top of my head, I think she's had arraignment.
Okay.
She's just been at preliminary appearance. Okay. Anything, go ahead. Anything else? Prayer during public meeting? I was telegraphing what I thought this was gonna be about, but I'll let you guys frame that issue before I address it.
Yeah, I had a, at our mayor's meeting, I had a gentleman come up and ask, uh, we'd started the meeting, it wasn't on the agenda, and he'd asked if he could say a prayer, if he could pray with the, uh, the people that, you know, that attended the meeting. And of course, we talked to him. I said, "Oh, talk to me after the meeting, and we need some clarification there." So I know that, um, you know, as far as the line, it's a difficult line. So as far, we wanna make sure this clarification from your office is exactly what can be done and possibly what is off limits.
So prayer in a public meeting is not necessarily an unusual thing. A lot of, a lot of meetings open up with some type of word from some type of non-denominational or rotating type of provider. Obviously, we would strongly recommend against someone on the board or a county employee meeting that. There's actually, in Clark County, they have an ordinance that says if someone wants to do it, they can put in a request to do that, and that can be done. There's no strict prohibition, but if there's not a prohibition, there also has to be a very broad allowance as to who can say a prayer, or who can say an implication, or something along those lines. So the example I always use is, you know, in State Capitol, they have Christmas tree, and somebody else wanted to put up a different type of display. And it's one of those, if you're gonna allow one, you allow all, or you allow none. And so I actually have copied that ordinance from Clark County. And then there's guidelines that they've published as well, which is, I read them, and I think they're a good indication if that's something county wants to do. Certainly, if a member of the public wants to stand in here and say prayer, we can, we can stop them from doing that. If they're disrupting the meeting, we might be able to say something. But as far as getting, I mean, with an implication, that is something that under certain circumstances, under certain...
Yeah, maybe, maybe we can take a look at that ordinance.
Sure, I'll make an else agreement.
Okay.
When you're talking, you're looking at also that a prayer was not, you know, public comments or anything like that on our mayor's agenda, that it's not... So there was nothing there that would say that anything was available to perform.
Right. Right. And I know that, I mean, the legislature, they have an open indication. There was even yesterday at the state Supreme Court, there was a ceremony, Native American ceremony, where we square each other, Chief Justice. I don't know if there was an indication there as well, and there was. So, I mean, it is not unheard of. It certainly, if that's something the board wants to consider, that's something that we would wanna have a lot of input into, so that we don't run afoul.
Okay. I'd like further discussion.
Yep, and so I'll make sure that he gets all of that information that I have.
Did you wanna talk about the recent Supreme Court decision in the PRA? Did you wanna talk about the...
Yes.
Okay.
Wilson.
Um, we have received a couple of new Public Records Act requests from Brian Portland. Um, and one of them, at least one of them, was addressed specifically to vote to the Office of Gary Stamper. So I wanted to let you know that under the recent Supreme Court decision about the legislature, um, there's a whole analysis about what the definition of agency of a public entity means as applied to the state legislator's offices. And that analysis is not entirely clear how it applies to a county, specifically because the whole point of the decision was that they held that the legislature, the Capitol held, right?
Yes.
The overarching body was not subject to the PRA, but the individual offices were. And that is an analogy that doesn't hold up with the county, where of course, the county is like a PRA agency, and we have to comply. So we're not sure how it maps. The reason I wanted to bring it before you was just to alert you that I think it's likely the case that, just to be well on the winny side of doing what we're supposed to do, that we would treat each elective office, just like the individual legislators in the legislature are now agencies because they hold any elective office, and the definition of HD includes every quote "office" of the state. And they decided that counts, that elective offices count for that. That to be, you know, very broad and making sure we comply, that we would probably wanna treat each of your elected offices as being a PRA office or PRA agency in itself, which means that we probably would like, it would be a good idea for you guys to designate our Public Records Manager as your Public Records Manager, so that if a request comes into you as an elected official in your office, that then you can use all the same machinery that the county uses with all the other offices and agencies to answer the PRA request correctly. So I'll be working on some sort of designation or something that I can bring to you, so you can make sure that you have adequate facilities to answer Public Records requests, and of course, we'll be answering the one that will be received to the best of our ability. So that's all I wanted. I just wanted to let you know that this was coming in case you thought it was weird, that you, you know, would hear it. You say like, "Well, I'm not an agency, I'm just one guy who works for an agency," but actually, 'cause you hold elective office, perhaps you are.
So, because I understand in our discussion that all, the other two commissioners also received the same email.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I mean, we'll be, we're answering all of them. We're gonna, uh, we always answer them anyway, of course, but we're going to, we're going to answer these ones, and it'll be useful to do some stuff to continue to improve our practice, to make sure that we are doing everything we're supposed to do.
We don't have any loopholes that...
Right. That's all I had on that one.
Okay.
Sure. Uh, in mid-December, in the middle of the Fourth of Christmas, Mr. Jackson had asked me to take a look at some proposed changes to the Southwest Regional Transportation Planning Organization Intermodal, or SWRTPO, as it's affectionately called by all people in the know. I can tell you that, having looked at that, it is actually very similar to the prior version of the contract, except for that it's just more explanatory about where the stuff comes from, what statutes comes from, a little bit of the history of the organization. I have talked with, um, Public Works about whether anything in that contract changes anything about their practice. They say, "No, it doesn't. We've been doing this for years." I am talking with Lee Napier to make sure nothing about it changes her practice, because it talks about the Regional Transportation Planning Organization, making sure that our comprehensive plan is consistent with what they're doing. Um, Lee's question was, is it all aspects of the comprehensive plan, or is it just transportation? Because I don't have a lot to do with them. And the answer is just transportation. And Mike Crowell, who was in on the email chain again, said that we're, we're working with them all the time. Like, they, they are taking their stuff from us, for our region at least.
My reason for asking that, Eric, was because we've had some, um, trying to find the right words, if you're, uh, unusual dealings with...
You mean passing?
Yeah. Passing. Um, and I wanted to be clear that the tenable agreement was clean, uh, because they had, what they reported would do is just send it out, have everybody sign off on it, and me Doug with it, and myself and another commissioner said, "That's not gonna work. We need to see what's in it." So that's the biggest reason why I asked you about that, was to make sure it was clean and that we were protected, you know, from, from the entire agreement.
Right, so the good news is, um, I actually knew about the, actually, it's a separate organization. So, um, we once before had a different interaction, a different organization that's down, it's a multi-county organization down in Calis. And it was about setting up a federal funding mechanism, and letting a grant recipient for federal funds. And our concern, Lynn Carter's concern in mind, was that they weren't really legally authorized to do the stuff they wanna do. Like, the stuff was all legal, it was just at that particular end, it wasn't authorized to do it. If we wanted to swap around, who's gonna do it? Um, and that blew up into a big mess, which, by the way, resulted after lots of career morale changes in a setup that's largely equivalent to how it was before, except for with a slightly different division of labor. Um, and then it's all legal. But, so the good news is that this contract, the Southwest Regional Transportation Organization, this is precisely the thing that that organization is allowed to do. And so there's really no concern in the same regard. So our office doesn't have that concern. I was just making sure none of the other offices do either. I haven't heard of any that is a problem. And so with your permission, I would tell Bill Fashin of the COG that, and he'd be able to send his draft around for people's consideration. Is that all right? And the last thing is, I wanna give you progress update on potential fireworks changes. Um, so at our last meeting, there was a sort of to-do list of several things to explore as you catch, we're working with stakeholders on this, such as looking at what the city had done, to see if we wanted to be uniform with them, if we're gonna make any change, talking to the tribes, talking to fire marshals or other people involved with burn bans, reaching out to look for a local organization to myself fireworks, to try to get a sense of who would be helped or heard, who made any changes in this regard. And so I, um, Natalie, the civil paralegal, has done some really helpful digging, calling around to various places. She's had a conversation with Chief Kida, R of A, about his opinions about what risks or lack of risks that fireworks pose. We call in to Doyle, unfortunately Doyle was on vacation, so we're still driven in touch base with him. She's talked to the various high schools about whether they do fundraising. Actually, I think it was just, not just high schools, she talked to all of the schools in the Jalesh School District at least. So far, she hasn't found any schools that are doing fundraising fireworks sales. So if you happen to know one, please let us know, so we can make...
Just a school is what you're asking, not the other groups?
Well, I mean, we, we're asking also, like, hey, you know, any clubs or part of the school that are doing it, just because we need to find someone to make sure we're gonna buy them. Uh, we have the contact information for some professional fireworks display organizations, including the tribal one, and I'll, I'm actually gonna personally call the tribal one as a show of respect, instead of having to do that. And so I just wanted you to know that we are working on it, and I hope that by the next update, I'll have something useful for you to consider in terms of options or code language or something like that. Is there anything in particular, based on what I said, that you want me to particularly go after or explore?
No, I mean, it's, uh, I know that you see the stands, you know, obviously, on Fourth of July, they're everywhere. So that's what, and I know the schools in particular, I know a couple of schools that used to do it, but I'm not sure if they still do it. It's in another county anyway. Uh, but I know the Mossar Fire District does a fundraising.
Okay.
And, uh...
The fire district, it sells, sells fireworks?
I believe so.
Is it a very good one to talk to, I guess?
Either the Horse and Riders Club, the Horse and Riders Club used to do it up there, but I'm not sure. But I always see volunteer firemen, or fire people in there, so. Probably, probably not the school itself, right? If we're the association.
Okay.
So, anyway, I know there's a lot of groups that do that, and maybe, uh, if you can contact Doug Fosberg, and I can give Doug a call too, and let him know, and then maybe you might ask him if I got that.
Okay. I mean, if you'd be willing to do that, and then I'll be, I mean, I'm having to do the work, so just tell me who you want me calling.
Okay, well, I'll call Doug and let him know, but, uh, I'll have him contact you.
This is unincorporated, this county, so, right?
Right. Well, I mean, it might be useful to...
That's, right?
So one of the things that we're doing is asking, for example, fire chiefs, like, what kind of danger or lack thereof they see from fireworks during burn ban periods, whether there are bits about that, just so we can educate ourselves, right? So if you run a fire district inside a city, your perspective is still useful in learning, even if it's not necessarily less than you regularly.
That's part of the issue, the problem I said before, that if we have it different in the city of Centroy, and trying to enforce or whatever, and we have different dates for fireworks, then like, are you unincorporated, or in the city? And I really tell sometimes, well, those fireworks, probably Jonathan, that's the same thing, wherever you live out there, it's hard to tell, in the city, or in the county.
Right.
So where did the city decide to do, you call...
They shortened the dates. They shortened the dates.
Right, and hours. They narrowed the dates and hours somewhat, but that, and that's the, that's all that they did. They did not, uh, they didn't otherwise, so I'll make a change.
Okay.
All right.
I'm gonna have Kevin go next, but Kevin, I'm gonna bring this conversation for you real quick, like, to give you a real world example. Um, this is on the new family paid medical leave issue. So the state of Washington has, since it was passed a new law, and that new law allows an employee to collect ninety percent of their wage, should have kept that right here, ninety percent of their wage, up to $1,000 per week when they're out on family medical. Obviously, that has a varying impact, you don't, you learn what your job is. So currently, uh, we have one employee that stands to lose about forty-two percent of their income when they're on FM La, because they have capped at that $1,000 per week. And so I think the question that Kevin wants to bring is whether or not they can use sick vacation time to supply them.
That's exactly right. The ninety percent, there is some potential variation as to the ninety percent depending on the employee's pay. Roughly speaking, it's a ninety percent of the, uh, of the employee's wage, and there is that absolute cap.
Can you speak into your mic, please? I'm having a hard time on the radio. Please.
Oh, sure. But, but that's right, there is that, that absolute cap, $1,000 per week. And the amount of, of leave that the new PF, $1,000 paid family medical leave act provides is twelve weeks for the employee's own serious health condition, twelve weeks for caring for a family member who requires assistance, or a combined total of sixteen weeks total, so it's in some combination of the medical leave and/or family. And so, uh, there is a provision as well within the administrative code, which allows an employer to designate benefits such as accrued leave, either accrued sick leave or accrued annual leave, and designate them as what's called supplemental benefits. Generally speaking, if the employer makes no such designation, the benefits would not be considered supplemental. And what would happen is ESD, what, if the employee elects to take sick leave, for example, the sick leave would be reported by the employer to the employment security department, to ESD. And ESD would then count the, uh, the leave, the payment for the leave received, essentially as hours' worth. And so if the employee was absent for a week and used forty hours of sick leave, ESD would say you received, paid for the forty hours that you were absent for, essentially the accrued. the employee that we receive a no benefit from the state. However, if the employer designates the leave as supplemental, it essentially doesn't get reported to ESD. And this enables the employee to get the full, let's say roughly ninety percent from the state, up to a thousand dollars per week, if they get that full benefit from the state. Then they can also use, let's say, sick leave to top off the benefits up to the level, so that they may be the same amount as their normal earnings as if they had continued to employ. So, there's a couple of issues. Well, first of all, let me just go through some of the options, and I'll explain some of the issues as, as like the law. So, option one, the cleanest and perhaps simplest option would be that the county does not designate annual leave or sick leave as a supplemental benefit. In that case, it would be, if the employee takes the leave, the leave gets reported to ESD, and their benefits are appropriated, and potentially they get no benefit from the state, or they get appropriated benefit, because ESD is going to look at that payment essentially as hours' worth. Option two would be, that we do designate the leave as supplemental. So, again, this would allow the employee to get the full benefit from the state, they get top up with the, let's say, sick leave, and they get their full, their full amount that they had, and they continue to work. Couple of issues with this. One concern that has arisen is if we do provide, this is an option, if we do designate the leave as a supplemental benefit, that perhaps employees would take more, they may be more inclined to take leave, and they also would not be drawn down on their leave balances at the same rate as if they didn't get the benefit from the state. Because if the state's paying ninety percent, up to a thousand dollars per week of the amount, they're only using a portion of their, of their leave. Whereas if, whereas if they were using forty hours of sick leave, that full forty hours would be taken off the books right away. So, they'd be drawing down on their balances at a slower rate. This raises the concern that employees would have more leave on the books, and therefore they'd be more inclined to, to be absent for longer periods of time from work. There's also some concern that if they have sick leave remaining, even after the sixteen weeks that is provided for under the paid family leave law, that if they still have sick leave on the books, there's also some question that they may be legally entitled to use additional time if they still have sick leave available for them. For example, if the family member is still ill, sick leave can be used for that purpose, they could be absent even longer period of time. So, so there's that concern. Option three...
Kevin, hold on, we're going to switch out the microphone, because everyone's having problems here.
I'm sorry.
Well, not everyone, I think people are not...
There you go. This is...
Do you want me to turn the volume down?
Probably, right here, in the bass. It's sinking up. There we go. Yeah. This is better?
Yes, thank you.
It's probably, it's probably better to not hear so much of my ramblings, anyway. So, anyway, option, option three would be that the, that the county provides some kind of allocated designation of supplemental benefits. So, for example, the county could say, we're going to designate a certain number of hours of sick leave as a supplemental benefit, rather than just designating all annual leave and all sick leave as a supplemental benefit. They could put perhaps some, some strings on that. So, designate either a type of leave, for example, designate sick leave as a supplemental benefit, but not designate annual leave as a supplemental benefit, or designate it up to a certain number of hours. So, it could be tailored in that way as well. But, those are essentially the three options, would be A, no designation of leave as a supplemental benefit, B, full designation of annual leave and sick leave as a supplemental benefit, and then C, some kind of hybrid or allocated supplemental designation of leave as a supplemental benefit. So, that's kind of a general outline of the decision that the board has to make. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What are other counties doing about this? Like, we can't be the only one that's affected by this.
That, that is a really good question, and to be, to be honest, you know, we've been trying to kind of wrap our heads around, the, the impact of, of this new law just started days ago, became effective as of January, and first to figure out what the different options were, and how, like, how we're going to implement it. And in terms of doing a comparative analysis, we're at, we're at that stage, but that's certainly something that we could look into and report back on.
I think it's important to note that with the FMLA, that we have people that have compensable time on the books, that they are still able to access that under FMLA, that they, they can choose to use the Washington State paid family leave. They don't have, it's not a either or, it's, it can be a combination thereof.
They could stage it, looking as now, they could say...
Yes. So, and so, a part of another issue that arises with that, and something that I'm working with Kevin on, is that when people are out on this, this Washington State paid family medical leave, is that they may be sacrificing their service credit hours, and then we're waiting for some ruling on that. So, if they go out for up to the sixteen weeks, or eighteen weeks in some situations with the disability of pregnancy, they may be sacrificing for that entire time period all of their service credit hours.
So, no retirement benefit for the group?
Exactly.
So, so that's true. So, the, the employee is, is free to choose between the EFML and, you know, and using, or I should say, or using their accrued leave. But, unless the county makes a designation of accrued leave as a supplemental benefit, then, again, any, any leave that the, this is the part where my mic wasn't working earlier, and even the employee receives will be counted by ESD, essentially as hours' worth, and that would reduce the amount of the benefit from the state that the employee may be eligible, either reduce or eliminate, the amount of the benefit that the employee could receive from the state. So, any other, any other questions on that?
No, I don't have any. Not at this time, I agree.
In addition to doing the research, would you put this in written form, outlining the ABC, and then letting us know what other counties or entities are doing? I think there's many across the state that are scratching their heads on this one.
As our current FMLA policy is written, and just keeping in mind that FMLA is earned paid leave, and with this new Washington pay, is paid leave, is that our policy is written such that as when a person is enrolled in the FMLA, is that they have the option, the employee has the option of which vacation, sick or ever comp time, if they have it available, to use at their discretion. So, it's up to the employee which time is used. So, if you're going to give some thought to designating supplemental, because we do have to report it as supplemental leave, then it could be all the things.
Well, sure. So, if we, if the, oh, and let me just respond for Commissioner Fund. Yes, absolutely, be happy to put this into a way, do a reform right for you, and maybe continue some kind of a comparative analysis. And so, so if we, if the, if the county does decide to make any kind of either complete designation as a supplemental benefit, or perhaps some kind of allocated designation of leave as a supplemental benefit, then, then the hours that, that are designated as a supplemental benefit don't even get reported to ESD, because, because if we report the, the, the hours ESD, they're going to, they're going to use that, and they're going to prorate, and that's going to reduce the employee's benefit. The point of the supplemental designation would be to allow the employee to, to, to top off the leave received from the state up to meeting their compensation that they would normally receive if they continued working. So, that's a decision we have to make if we want to allow that as an additional benefit to our employees. Again, with some of the issues with whether or not that would, well, it would certainly mean that employees are drawing down slower on their, on their accrued leave, so they'll be essentially booking more, and would this lead to, you know, increased absences, is another issue of concern. But, I mean, I'll, I'll find all of this in, in writing, and so for, for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We seem to be going from the bottom to the top, so I'll go the next, and it looks like everything else will be in the second session. So, Drug Corps Mental Health Program, a couple of things. First of the Mental Health Program, we have been invited to speak at a national conference coming up in, even October, about the work that we've been able to do with that program. And as you know, we are always looking for ways to improve that program. Drug Corps has recently expanded the number of participants that can be in there. The unfortunate thing is, is that the Court Compliance Officer, Kevin Dickie, will be retiring sometime soon, I don't know the exact date.
Man.
And then he comes and tells you that surprises. I thought, I think it's public knowledge, I'm not a hundred percent sure. So, that goes for you guys, too. But, so the one thing that, is that it's an integral part to the success of Drug Corps. And if you look at other Drug Corps programs, they don't have the same success rate that Lewis County does, and that main factor is the, the compliance officer. And we had talked about perhaps expanding that to the Mental Health Corps program as well, because we think that that is also a vital factor. And unfortunately, the Mental Health Corps program suffered a loss recently through the death of one of the participants, had nothing to do with the Mental Health Program. However, it's always an opportunity to reflect and figure out what we could have done differently, and how we can improve the program. And that's kind of the answer that we came up with. We think that if, a part of the reason that Officer Dickie is so successful is because he builds that one-on-one relationship with the participants. And if we can have that relationship with those in the Mental Health Corps program as well, we just think that it would be so much more successful. And when you look at the, the resources Drug Corps has, they have two full-time staff members plus Officer Dickie, so that gives them three. And I think they're at fifty-five participants, somewhere in there. And when you look at the Mental Health Program, I think we're at thirty-five, and we have one, and they have one full-time staff. So, I know, I just kind of want to play the groundwork, but I met, after we learned the incident, I met with the, the Mental Health Corps program team and some of the judges, and we discussed the issue, and that's kind of where we think that we get the most improvement, the least amount of investment. The numbers that have been thrown out there before, and these are just off the top of my head, the Mental Health Corps program has saved the county, and well in excess of a billion dollars in the first two years of existence in incarceration costs alone. And so, that's, that's money, you know, the return on investment, you know, in these types of programs. And so, I, I think that it's well worth the county's while to consider that. I know that the Corps, or the Board recently heard the entire group talking about the importance of the program, and we're talking generational change. So, that's just something that I wanted to bring up to the Board, and we'll be talking about it later as well.
Do you want to mention Family Court?
Oh, yes. So, and, and the only reason I don't mention Family Court is because that's the Corps program that the Prosecutor's Office has served to do it. That's dependency, and that's handled by the Attorney General's Office. But, yes, that's also an important leg of that program. And, and they do some great work up there as well. So, you see the other three things that I have on there, and all three of them are kind of tied together. I'm again reviewing my request that the Board form a salary grid committee, and I think that that should be made up of some elected officials, as well as represented and non-represented individuals. I think that where the salary grid is now lax behind other counties, we, we spoke before that if you're a prosecutor, fresh out of law school, and you have a choice between Thurston County and Lewis County, you make fourteen thousand dollars less per year walking into Lewis County. And when you look at the fact that the Defense Council attorneys for Superior Court just got over a nineteen percent raise, and the county offers the attorneys in the Prosecutor's Office a two percent raise. When you look at twenty eighteen figures just posted on the county website for indigent defense, the announcement in twenty eighteen was one point eight billion dollars in indigent defense. If you look at the salary and benefits contribution by the county to defense prior to the Prosecutor's Office for criminal side, so, and that is criminal prosecutors and paralegals and office assistants that deal with just criminal stuff, the contribution was one point seven million. So, and we're talking the one point eight million, those are part-time attorneys. This is maybe half of what they do. And yet, we at the Prosecutor's Office, and when I say we not being able to, like, carry a caseload, it's nothing compared to what the folks in my office do. They give the defense attorneys what they, what they work on, right? They're not the ones reviewing the search warrants, they're not the ones getting called up to the scene in the middle of the night, they're not the ones routinely declining to file cases or working with law enforcement to get other work done. It is the Prosecutor's Office who determines what cases get filed. So, I'm not saying the defense attorney should get less, but I think that there needs to be some parity there. And when you look at some of the raises, the teachers have gotten recently anywhere between twenty and twenty-four percent. And if you look at contract hours, there's teachers in Centroya that are making ninety-two dollars an hour. You could be a chief criminal deputy in my office for fifteen years and not make that much, which means that you've been an attorney for probably twenty-five years, somewhere in there. And again, I'm not saying teachers should make less, but they have a master's. To be an attorney in my office, you have to have a doctorate. To be a paralegal in my office, you have to have some type of advanced degree and/or training. We have, and I'll, I'll pick on Natalie, because she's here, she came to work with us on December sixteenth, was her first day. And now I have to look her in the eye and say, in twenty twenty, you're going to take home less money. And that's just not right to you, because of what was offered, and the increase in medical benefits not being matched by the county. And so, I think that we need to take a strong look at the salary grid and how negotiations are built. The Me Too clause that is in the contracts is detrimental to this county. Last time the attorneys were, and let me clarify, I'm speaking as the prosecutor, basically their boss, I'm not giving the county advice right now. But, the Me Too clause, when the attorneys were contacted for the last contract, they were said, oh, get rid of the Me Too clauses, it's a horrible thing. And then this negotiation goes around, they're like, that's all we can do, because those Me Too clauses will kill us. Two things. A, the attorneys are a market position, so that should not apply to them. And then when they're told that if they want to be treated differently, they should earn account interest our way, that's not appropriate either. And then, when you look at the paralegals, they're not the average county worker either, and I'm not saying that to demean anybody or to bless them what their job is, but you have to have advanced training to do what they do. With the exception of office assistants and legal assistants, and they can just, they can walk, basically, in on the street and, and qualify for those jobs. Although, I think I have, I think I have one office assistant who has a bachelor's degree. I have multiple paralegals that have bachelor's degrees. Certainly, I think that there needs to be some type of parity between what is expected and what the compensation is. My folks are not asking to be paid what they would make in the private sector, we talked about that before. Many of my attorneys, and I don't want them to listen to this part, but any of my attorneys can walk out easily, make two times as much as they do right now, within the first year. They're dedicated individuals who do a very important function, and I know that we can all make that argument. But, if you, if you look at the way that it kind of gets pared down, we have a lot more law enforcement than we do prosecutors. So, we have to represent all the law enforcement, or take their cases, we don't represent them. Take the cases that they give us, and we have to look at Morton, Mossy Rock, Toledo, Gwinlon, Naperville, PL, the Sheriff's Office, which also covers Vader, Centroya, Chalisa, State Patrol, Liquor Cannabis Board, sometimes the federal government. We also have the radio, and all of those different agencies. That gets pared down to, I believe, eight attorneys. That gets pared down to eight attorneys that have to handle all of that. And then, when we decide what cases are going to get filed, those eight attorneys go against seventeen contract attorneys. And so, it gets spread back out. And that doesn't include, it doesn't include peels and things of that nature. That's a, that's a separate contract that the county doesn't have to deal with, but we do. And that does also, doesn't count retained attorneys. But frankly, the contract attorneys that we have in Lewis County, I would match them up against any retained attorneys that we have seen throughout the state. So, I, I think that, you know, many people have been asked to do more with less, and the Prosecutor's Office is no different. And that does also, doesn't count retained attorneys. But frankly, the contract attorneys that we have in Lewis County, I would match them up against any retained attorneys that we have seen throughout the state. So, I, I think that, you know, many people have been asked to do more with less, and the prosecutor's office is no different. In 2019, compared to 2018, district court filings were up 7.5%. And that's just through November of 2019. So, the final numbers would be that number would be higher. Felony filings are up 3.2%. That doesn't include referrals, cases that we have kicked back for, for further investigation or just flat out declined. But then, the defense attorneys get over a 19% increase in their compensation, not for cases filed in 2020, for cases settled in 2020. So, if there's a 2017 case, 2018 case hanging out there, then they get to charge at a new rate. And so, I think that there needs to be a close look at what is done and how it is done. And I think that it needs to be done quicker than the county typically moves. Last time, we had a salary review, some type of meaningful review, I believe it took in excess of 14. And while the other offices continue to do more with less, frankly, the board has not flung that pitch. They've added, they've added over approximately $300,000 to the salary of the board by adding admin staff, by adding the county manager, by adding the assistant county manager, by adding support staff. And that increase has an effect in decreasing the workload of those around them. But yet, we can't even get people to apply for our jobs. We've had an open position posted with the prosecutor's association since August, since August, zero parents. And I mean, there's only so much local mirrors we can put out there. And I, it's, I never want to invite my people to leave. Love them all, they're like brothers, sisters, kids, whatever you want to call them. But at the same time, they're, they have families, they have to, to look out for their own best interests. I've told the board before, I lost a paralegal because she took a devotion to go to the state to make $500 more a month. We tried to make her a senior paralegal here, she still wanted to make less. We just, we're losing another staff member to the prosecutor's association.
Who's that?
Alicia from the family support. So, her last day is Thursday. And although it's a quasi-public organization, there's still many. So, something needs to get done. I know I've voiced my frustration, I'm sending emails, I feel sorry for Becky because I call and, and I try not to yell, but I gripe her all the time, asking for various numbers. And I know that Janelle is tired of running all these different numbers for us. But when, when you look at the numbers, the parity's not there, the compensation's not there. And I think that somebody needs to be done because the workload is not getting less. And certainly, the, I guess, the incentive is for us to file less charges because then we would have less work and then the pay more equal out. But that's, that's not what we're about, we're about public safety. And we're about doing what is, what we think is in the best interest of the community. And that, that means one on, and prosecuting cases. We certainly don't want to end up with some of the situations that you see in King County, Pierce County, St. Helish County, where in essence, they legalize the possession of some drugs and do not even treat those that are, that are suffering from addiction. You know, not only do we try to let people accountable, but we try to help people get better. And we try to help people, and I've said it before, redefine normal, right? No one wakes up and says, "I want to have mental illness, I want to have a drug addiction." And so, we try to help people break those cycles. And I think that it's important that we have great people doing it. But I can't hold on to, I mean, regardless of what kind of work environment we have, I can't hold on. And so, I'm asking the board to, to form that salary commission, or not salary commission, that's what I mean by that. So, I'm asking the, the board to review the salary grid and set a, set a firm deadline as to when that's going to be done. I believe that was the counter from the attorneys in my office. They said, and Paul was here, who's the head of that association, if I'm wrong, I believe they said, "We'll take the 2% that the county has offered." We want a salary grid review, there needs to be a meaningful review and what a deadline is to when it's going to be done. And I think that's fair. And so, I would ask the board to do that. I promised my non-attorney staff that I would ask, I asked the first time and, and nothing happened. So, this is one of those things that I guess we'll keep seeing on the, on the agenda until something gets done. So, that's it.
Thank you, Jonathan. I think, you know, I made some comments during our last meeting, we add that in that, in that room in particular. So, Erica's not here today, so I think we'll have a further discussion on this and see if we can push this forward.
I think the only thing left is, I remember I can move section to section.
Kevin, I want to use the viewers. It's the meeting schedule, it's a three or four minute session.
Three.
Well, we'll take seven, we'll take the time we got, then.
So, we have a extended session.
Yes. For- I guess five minutes.
Seven.
Okay. Seven. We have another hour.